Be a few more people coming in. We do still run by Saint Peace time, even in quarantine and in COVID country. And we're proud of it. Anyways, welcome to all of you. Welcome to those who might be visiting from outside the parish. We're happy to have you with us. And thanks to all of you for being steady and faithful in gathering. After the couple of weeks of more than gray skies, it was really that that day that we had the orange cloud and orange sky, it was scary. I had a nine o'clock appointment that day to show somebody that was preparing for a wedding ceremony in our garden, and it was dark and scary and orange. And so when I talked with Jan Stegner, asking her if she would be willing to be with us on one of our town halls, she said she would. Jan was, some of you will remember, she was on our parish staff a few years ago, working with our middle school students. And Jan has done a lot of work in retreat presentations to parishes and a lot at the wonderful San Damiano Retreat Center in Danville, which I know many of you have been to, one of the most beautiful and prayerful spots in our East Bay area. And so I said, well, what do you want to talk about? And she said, hope. I said, can you refine it? And she said, the blue skies of hope. So I said, that's, that's perfect. So we're happy to have her here and a little treat with a younger voice joining in with us tonight as well. And then a couple of times we've used that the Zoom breakout rooms, and everybody seemed to survive the experience. So we're going to do that again this evening, because last week we had that wonderful presentation by Dr. Fred Piazza on maintaining good mental health in a difficult time. And today Jen will help us to look at maintaining a good spiritual outlook and keeping the hope alive. And so then at the end of the evening, we'll do the breakout sessions again. And we can look at, you know, what have you gained from either last week or this week? And how are you yourself trying to maintain both that mental and spiritual health during these challenging times? And they are challenging. There's no two ways about it. Now, this morning I was on a St. Perpetua School Board meeting, and you know, the parents of young children in particular, they're hurting. You know, this is such a difficult time, the lack of socialization for the children. If a parent is working at home, if you have a TKK, one or two year old, you can't do your business because you have to be with them at the computer, at their sessions, their online sessions. They can't do that on their own. And so a parent of a young child can't do their at-home work and still maintain, you know, and help their child through distance learning. So let's keep them in mind as we pray this evening for all of our community, our family and friends, and especially those young parents and young children who are trying their best to brave their way through this difficult time. Bless us all in our efforts, oh Lord, amen. So Jen, welcome and you're on.
Anyway, when Father John asked me to do the talk, I was very, of course, I will do the talk. I'll do a talk for you. And when he asked me what topic I'd like to do, I wanted something uplifting, and I thought maybe we could all use a little bit of hope right now. We actually, I live in Walnut Creek in our neighborhoods. There are numerous homes where children have written in chalk, "hope" in front of their houses. They, people have got lights that spell out hope that they put on at night. So there's various ways that people are experiencing and trying to share hope. And I appreciate that. So when he asked me to come up with the catchy phrase, "the blue skies of hope, trusting in the light of God", it was, like he said, one of those days where the air quality was terrible. And I did end up going outside. But we were all struggling. We were all struggling. There was heat. There was extremely poor air quality. I'm an outside gal, and like all of you, I was stuck inside with the windows closed, just waiting. And not patiently, because I'm not a very patient person. But I was waiting for the blue skies to appear and the light of God to take over the atmosphere. And I was hoping that each day would bring about cleaner air so that we could resume our outdoor activities. And it did. Today I checked our air quality, and I believe in Walnut Creek it was 31. So hope against hope, it got better. Before we begin, I just, I like to give my listeners and viewers a taste of what our discussion will be and look like at the beginning of the presentation. So tonight, we will talk about what is hope? We will look at different strategies to practice hope, but exercise hope and build hope in our lives. We will look at hope through the eyes of Scripture and through the eyes of faith. You will all hear how you all give hope, and I've seen it in motion. So you will all hear this. And we will hear hopeful words from our Pope Francis, quotations from him. We will engage in a small meditation on hope and love in the time of struggle. And my daughter is joining me here, Joelle, and she is a licensed therapist with a master's degree in psychology. And so she will chime in at the end on coping skills and self-care during a pandemic. Again, like Kristoff said, and Father John said, we will break into small groups for discussion and reflection and have a closing prayer. So that's a lot. I better get started. So there is a passage from Albert Camus. He's a French Algerian philosopher, author and journalist. And it reads, "In the midst of hate, I found there was within me an invisible love. In the midst of tears, I found there was within me an invincible smile. In the midst of chaos, I found there was within me an invincible calm. I realized through it all that in the midst of winter, I found there was within me an invincible summer. And that makes me happy. Where it says that no matter how hard the world pushes against me, there's something stronger, something better pushing right back. And that is hope. I myself personally witnessed the true definition of hope when our very good friend's son fought an incredible and very, very, very scary battle with COVID-19. Mike Jr. is just 37, and he contracted the virus. They don't know how, or he lived in it. He lives in Arizona. They don't know how he did, but he did. And he contracted it badly. The virus turned into a secondary infection several times. He was on a ventilator numerous times. He was on a 360 rotating bed. He fought pneumonia and was put on dialysis. He fought, he had blood clots in his lungs, and he had muscle atrophy for laying in his hospital bed for a good six weeks. And still now, I talked to my friend the other day, and he is still dealing with the muscle atrophy, loss of balance, but he's wanting to get back to work. He has to get back to work. But through it all, every up and down, my friends asked for prayers. They had masses said for Mike. They asked for good thoughts. They asked for Mike's family, his wife and two teenage kids. They asked for prayers for doctors and for nurse staff. They remained hopeful. They were scared, but they were hopeful. They were anxious, but they were hopeful. They were worried, but they were hopeful and hope-filled. Mike is finally at home now, and he's recuperating, yet he still has a long way to go. But the example of this family was hope in motion. And the reaction and response from their friends and family was also hope in motion. It was living hope, if you will. This past April 11, at the Easter Vigil, an Easter Vigil that occurred during the worldwide pandemic, Pope Francis addressed his 30 people audience with a message of hope. He told his global audience that because of the resurrection of Jesus, quote, "Tonight, we acquire a fundamental right that can never be taken away from us, the right to hope." He went on to say, and I quote, "It is a new and living hope that comes from God. It is not mere optimism. It is not a pat on the back or an empty word of encouragement. It is a gift from heaven, which we could not have earned on our own." Pope Francis concluded his hopeful message by urging people today as pilgrims in search for hope to be like the women after the resurrection and cling to the feet of Jesus. Hope is a positive spiritual practice with the power to pull us through difficult times. We usually hear the word hope in metaphors, a ray of hope, a beam of hope, a glimmer of hope, a break in the clouds, which is what I was looking at the other day. And one of my favorites, a light at the end of the tunnel, if you will. Hope, though, can be a learned practice, and like a muscle, it can be strengthened with practice and use. Certain attitudes support hope more than others. And as a matter of fact, Father John, on Sunday in his homily, mentioned two of the three attitudes of hope. When he talked about those who have lost jobs and are currently searching for jobs, he said they must have patience and they must have courage. And they also must have hope. So the first attitude of hope is patience, the ability to tolerate delays, a willingness to let events unfold in their own time. Now, the three attitudes, patience, courage and persistence, are all found throughout Scripture, both in New and Old Testaments. But I've pulled a few verses out in order to use examples for these three attitudes. So for instance, we see patience found in Hebrews, chapter 10, verse 36. The Scripture says that patient endurance is what you need now so that you will continue to do God's will. Then you'll receive all that He has promised. When I think about it, who would I say is a person that comes to mind when I think about patience in Scripture? It would have to be Job. But I don't know about all of you, but this is something really hard for me as a human being. Because when something is in a place where I don't want it to be, or it's hard for me, I want to fix it. I want to control it. I want to correct it, and I want to resolve it now. And I believe this is a common human condition. We like to things happen, we like to have things happen when we want it to happen, not Kairos on God's time, but on our own time. Another attitude to support hope is courage, a sort of outlook of confidence, even when we're facing the unknown, such as we are now with COVID. A mindset that even though we don't know when there will be a definite end in sight, we are confident that we will get through these times. And even though the future will more than likely look a lot different than it did before March 15, we are secure in knowing that we will be certain that we can handle changes that this pandemic will bring to our lives. Scripturally, we read about courage, another example in Deuteronomy, chapter 31, verse 6, where it says, "Be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid and do not panic before them, for the Lord your God will personally go ahead of you. He will neither fail you nor abandon you." Who would I say is a courageous person in Scripture? Jesus, of course, Jesus. The third attitude to support hope is persistence, the determination to keep going no matter what happens. As we know, we get better at times in life, sometimes by failing at things, because we can learn from those things and those experiences, and we can move forward. We do not give up. Scripturally, we read a persistence in Romans, chapter 12, verse 12. When we read, rejoice in our confident hope, be patient in trouble and keep on praying. And as Thea Bowman says, keep on keeping on. In Luke, chapter 18, verse 1 through 8, we see persistence as we read the parable of the persistent widow who does not give up. She asks the judge for a plea, and she was so persistent. And as Scripture said, she bothered the judge so much that he granted her plea and he let her have it. She would not give up until she had that. This is an example of persistence. In addition to our attitudes that support hope, there are daily cues, if you will, to remind us of hope. Turning on a lamp is a cue to practice hope. Every good time we turn on a light or a lamp, it's a cue for us to practice that. Planting a seed or a bulb reminds us to plant hope in our hearts. And when meeting people who maybe are doomy and gloomy and not maybe hopeless, we can say a prayer for them and vow to ourselves to hold on to hope. Now, to get ready for this presentation, I recently asked a few friends if they had any thoughts or what thoughts they had on hope as we pass through this pandemic. And some of the responses were, quote, "I'm realizing what doesn't matter. What doesn't matter. That gives me great hope to move forward with great focus and clarity." Another quote from a friend, "Exercise, read, read poetry. Try to make your island closer to Eden. Hug everyone in your circle closer and more often and make peace with God." And one of my favorites, because it has something to do with all of our St. Perpetua community, with all of us. My friend said, "Where there is humanity, there is hope. There are so many good people in this world. We will get through this." So I want to share, I want to take a few minutes to share with how our community, our St. Peace community here is giving families hope, much, much hope. Every other week on Wednesdays, I volunteer at St. Francis of Assisi, St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank. And I've been to the pantry there where this very community has had a food drive that very day and brought the food to the parish. One Sunday afternoon in August, two full cars or vans from St. Perpetua drove to the parish in Concord, St. Francis of Assisi, to drop off food that filled our entire pantry. The pantry floor is pretty big, and the entire floor was covered. You couldn't see the hardwood floors. It was full to the brim. It had pasta. It had cereal. It had beans, cooking oil, apple juice, rice, even grocery bags, which we need to pack our customers' food in. It took us hours to unpack and put away that food. It was beautiful. And it was incredible, and it came from all of you, all of us, our community. These food supplies feed many, many families who line up outside the pantry on Monday, Wednesday and Fridays from 9:30 to 11:30. We get as many, today we had 17 families. We've gotten as many as 26 on a given Wednesday. The families are mothers, fathers, grandmothers, babies, children, all looking for help. Some come in, they need a PG&E bill paid. Some need rent assistance. And lately, there are more and more people in line because more and more people are out of work. Mothers are home, helping their children with virtual learning. Older siblings are taking care of younger brothers and sisters. Grandparents are stepping up to care for grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And families are living in small, tight places, some apartments, some small homes with seven, eight, nine people living together. I remember a couple of Wednesdays ago, one family in particular came in, and they brought their children. And their children were so, so happy to receive a box of croissants and some strawberries. Their faces just lit up. They went to hug us, but of course, during these times, we couldn't. But it was the smallest of things that made these kids so happy. And they are so very thankful for your assistance. As a matter of fact, I was called in today to work, and we had about 17 families. It was a different day because more than half the families presented us with the PG&E bill. And most of the PG&E bills were one to three months behind. The bills were anywhere from $400 to $600. These folks were in jeopardy of losing their electricity. We did what we could, and we paid about half of each family's bill. Our director looked at one woman's bill who came in and told her, and our director told this one woman, "There's a notice on your bill, and it says that you're using too much power for this month." And the woman went to say that she lives with four adults and two children in her household. Both her mom and her sister who live with her have cancer. And during the time of the heat wave and the unhealthy air, she needed to run her air conditioner and her fans to keep the house cool and the air clean. We paid for half her bill, gave her four bags of food and a box of supplies for her kids for school. Looking at her eyes, because we are all wearing masks, of course, I saw not only gratitude, but hope. I saw, per se, I can make it another month. We will be okay for now. St. Perpetua parishioners, you have no idea how much promise, faith and hope you give to these wonderful people in need when you do the food drives for them. And I want to thank you all. I get to see it firsthand. It's hard when these folks first come in, but watching them leave with bags and boxes full of groceries, partially paid bills, their little ones leaving, hugging their favorite boxes of cereal to eat. And hope and happiness in their eyes warms my heart and allows hope to remain within me and within them. So thank you all. As Pope Francis says, "In today's pandemic and haunted world, how many people these sad days have planted small seeds of hope with gestures of care, affection and prayer?" And that is all of you. This is the face of hope. Communities, people working together, making life a bit easier for each other. This virus does not define us. Our work within our communities, our betterment for each other, our uniting in one way or another, our love for one another is what defines us. And isn't this how Jesus wants us to live? In the Gospels, we are constantly reading of Jesus healing the sick, befriending the oppressed, forgiving the offenders and the sinners, giving people second chances. This is hope. This is love. And the most powerful example that we have in Scripture is the hope that lies in the resurrection. Jesus went through terror and hopelessness on his walk to Calvary. He suffered tremendously at the hands of Pontius Pilate. And when he dies on the cross, not only are the women in John, who were at the foot of the cross, filled with despair and hopelessness, but his disciples, those that he had healed and helped and accepted, were filled with anguish. Yet, as the women waited with patience, as we talked about, to perfume his body and show courage, as we talked about, to return to the tomb and were persistent, as we talked about, and their desire to properly bury him, they continued their acts of hope. And as Pope Francis stated in his homily at this year's Easter Vigil, "The women did not allow themselves to be paralyzed. They did not give in to sorrow and regret. They did not morosely close in on themselves or flee from reality. They were doing something simple yet extraordinary, preparing at home spices to anoint the body of Jesus. They did not stop loving. In the darkness of their hearts, they lit the flame of mercy. They were filled with the greatest gift of hopefulness that was there that day. Their Lord, their teacher, their Savior had risen from the dead." Hope comes in the works of God within the hardship and fear. Hope works with faith. It cannot be seen as in faith, but it is a vision of something better to come. We read in Scripture of often troubled times, and we see it in our world today. But God's love prevails. For St. Paul, hope is in a person. It is Christ himself. In Romans, chapter 8, verse 38 and 39, we read, "I am convinced that neither death nor life, nor demons, neither the present nor the future, nor any powers, neither height nor depth, nor anything else in all of creation, will be able to separate us from the love of God, that is in Christ Jesus, our Lord." It is this assurance of the love and presence of Jesus and His Father that allows anyone who is suffering to find encouragement and comfort. Jesus Himself and His love for each of us is the reason for our hope. So I invite you to remember the resurrection, especially when we think a situation is hopeless, when there is no end in sight, when immorality, anxiety, when depression seem to be winning out. The resurrection is proof that despair and death do not win, that God is at work in the most hopeless of human situations. In 2017, when Pope Francis was giving his talks on how to have hope, he reminds people, and especially our youth, to remain full of hope, he says. No matter where God has planted you, always, always have hope. He goes on to say in 2017 at those talks, "When life gets hard and you've fallen, get up. Never stay down. Get up and let people help you to your feet. Allow them to help you. If you're sitting, start walking. Start your journey. If you're bored, stiff, crush boredom with good works, which is what all of you are doing. If you feel empty and demoralized, ask the Holy Spirit to replenish you. Work for peace among people. Love people. Respect everyone's journey, whether it be troubled or down the straight and narrow path. Everyone has a story behind them. Jesus has given us a light that shines in the darkness. Defend it. Protect it. This unique light is the greatest richness entrusted to your life. Ask God for courage every day. And if fear or evil looms so large that it seems insurmountable, remember that Jesus lives within you. Jesus lives within us. Spend time with people who have kept a childlike heart. Learn from splendor, nurture, amazement. And live, love and believe with God's grace. Never despair." Pope Francis reminds us that true hope is built on God's Word and His promise of salvation and eternal life. During COVID, it was in the beginning, I think, of COVID, maybe, I don't know, March or April. This was on This was on my Facebook page, and I found it. And it just gave me another way to look at shelter in place and the virus and what I was going through myself as being, you know, at home and feeling isolated. Like I said, I'm a people person. I'm a social butterfly. I like to hug people. And, but this gave me, this reading gave me a different take on it. And I'm sorry, I don't have the author. I can look for that later. But the reading says, "What if the universe is trying to get us to slow down, to stop producing, to stay home and let the earth breathe a little without all the extra pollution we cause daily? To take a step back and realize how we really impact earth and one another, that we aren't as significant or in control as we think we are. A virus can come through and wipe us all out, but earth will still be here. We are all connected. Just like we can spread a disease, we can also spread love, kindness, and positivity. Use this time for reflection of your contribution and the life you're living. Slow down and finally hear yourself again. The universe is always speaking to us if we are willing to listen." I just thought that was beautiful. It has spoken to me since this whole thing began. I keep a copy of it in my datebook. I keep the copy on my Facebook page. It just reminds me that, you know, maybe, since we're in this time, it is a time where we can learn to slow down, catch our breath, and remember that we are all in this together. So with that, we have a really short meditation that I'm going to invite you all to join in on. This meditation is by Alex Naisman, and it's a meditation on hope and love in a time of struggle. So I'm going to invite you, like I said, it's very short, to either close your eyes or simply focus on something comforting in the room you're sitting on, whether it be a picture, or a painting, or a cross, or a book, or some sort of a symbol, and focus on that. Focus on your breathing. Actually, the meditation will remind you to do that. And relax. And just remember, there's nowhere you need to be right now except right here. "In a world so filled with brokenness and sorrow, it would be easy to lose ourselves in never-ending grief. To be choked by our outage, outrage, to be paralyzed by the enormity of suffering, to feel our hearts squeezed tight with hopelessness. Instead, this evening, let us simply breathe together as we hold our hearts open. Breathing in as our hearts fill with compassion. Breathing out as we pray for healing in our world and in our lives. Breathing in, opening ourselves to the transforming power of love. Breathing out as we pray for peace in our world and in our lives. Breathing in as we hold hope in our hearts. Breathing out as we pray for justice in our world and in our lives. May we know our strength. May we be filled with courage. May our love flow from us into this world. Breathing in, we are the prayer. Breathing out, we are the healing. Breathing in, we are the love. Breathing out, we are the peace. Breathing in, we are the hope. Breathing out, we are the justice. May we know our strength. May we be filled with courage. May our love flow from us into the world. Amen. Blessed be. May it ever be so." Even though our talk tonight is all about hope, we've got to be honest. These are challenging times, as Father John has said. We are social distancing, meaning no hugs, handshakes. Our community time and time spent with family and friends is limited. There is job loss, meaning people are struggling to put food on the table, gas in their cars, a roof over their heads, kind of like the example I gave at St. Vincent de Paul. And then there is fear of this sickness, meaning we spend so many of our waking hours with anxiety and depression, worrying. And if we can get a good night's sleep, a decent night's sleep, we often wake thinking about, how will I be tomorrow? Will I be okay? Who will I talk to or call? How will I spend my day? How long will this go on for? These are normal and common shared thoughts for all of us. My daughter Joelle is a trained marriage and family therapist and with a master's degree in psychology. And she's joining us tonight briefly to give us some tips on self-care, which is a hopeful thing to do, to treat ourselves and each other with self-compassion and self-love, which, by the way, Jesus encourages throughout the Scriptures and all the Gospels. So I'm going to hand you over to Joelle.
Thank you. As we hope, we can also take care of ourselves, because some days we're going to be more hopeful than others. So self-care really focuses on how do we hold ourselves when we're having a good day or when we're having a bad day. We're all experiencing and feeling a lot because there's a lot going on right now. We are grieving an old normal, and we are trying to find a new normal. We're in this transition forest. There's no right way to handle right now, so we kind of have to give ourselves a break of how we're dealing with the day-to-day of this pandemic. A main focus can be what's in my control right now. What can I do? One of the things that's been encouraged for self-care is to, one, name what you're feeling, validate that, and then consider how you can take care of yourselves when you feel this. So for example, I am in anxiety, and that's okay. I need to practice calm. I am in sadness, and that's okay. I need to practice gratitude. So self-care, as we kind of... That is in our control. That is something that we can do on a day-to-day basis. There are different types of self-care, mental, emotional, physical, spiritual, social. This goes on and on. It is a way to ground ourselves and soothe ourselves and kind of turn down the volume of our emotions and anxiety when they get to be too much. We can change our perspective from what's going to happen, when will this all end, when will we be under this new normal, to what's happening right now? What can I do today? What can I do this week? Some examples could be cooking, walking, talking to friends, gardening, attending a group Zoom, cleaning, spending time with loved ones, whatever it is that makes you feel good. Whatever it is that as you're feeling something, good emotion, bad emotion, whatever it is, you're holding yourself and you're taking care of yourself. Another reason to kind of practice self-care is so that we can take care of each other. There's a quote that "we can't fill from an empty cup." So we need to fill up our own cup to be able to give to others. An example, personally for myself, I'm a counselor for high school students. And the past two weeks, when it was all icky outside, I was in a really bad spot. I was not happy. I didn't like my job. I was angry all the time. And I realized it's because I couldn't go for my daily walks. My daily walks, I get to kind of clear my head. I get to be out in nature. I get to kind of breathe in the fresh air, and I couldn't do that. And so I realized that I was giving from my cup every day, but I wasn't filling it. And so I had to kind of find other creative ways to take care of myself in that moment. And I've been able to take my walks again because it's beautiful outside, and I can feel myself getting filled up again. So kind of also considering how we're taking care of ourselves so that we can take care of each other. One of the things, one of, a social worker that I really love, Dr. Brené Brown, she said, "We can't give up on people because we are all we have. We either get well together or we get sick together during this pandemic." So really considering how we are all coming together. Like my mom said, this virus is not going to define us, but how we take care of each other is going to define us.
Thank you. All right, I have a closing prayer and a last little word. And then I think our pro-tech guy, Mr. Kristoff, is going to do what he needs to do to put us in groups. But we've done a lot of interfaith work on our town hall meetings, and I found a prayer of hope during this pandemic. And it is by Rabbi Naomi Levy. And it says, "We are frightened, God, worried for our loved ones, worried for our world, helpless and confused. We turn to you seeking comfort, faith, and hope. Teach us, God, to turn our panic into patience and our fear into acts of kindness and support. Our strong must watch out for our weak. Our young must take care of our old. Help each one of us to do our part to halt the spread of the virus. Send strength and courage to the doctors and nurses in the front lines of this battle. Fortify them with the full force of their healing powers. Send wisdom and insight to the scientists working day and night across the world to discover healing treatments. Bless their efforts, God. Fill our leaders with the wisdom and the courage to choose wisely and act quickly. Help us, God, to see that we are one world, one people, who will rise above this pandemic together. Send us health, God. Watch over us. Grace us with your love. Bless us with your healing light. Hear us, God. Heal us, God. Amen." And on closing words, I just, I want to thank you all, and I invite you to grab two bags of food and a box of hope and feel your soul brighten and lighten them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.